No order. Clay Township, Board Trustees, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Beautiful day. Gotta love it. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Absent, I hear she's gonna show up in five minutes, ten minutes.
There is, here she is, she's early.
Oh, say here.
Here.
Okay.
Sorry, everybody.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay, we're all here. First thing I have is Bill's payable, I will entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Bill's payable in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
I support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on agenda, we did have a public hearing scheduled for our Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, the project plan for that, and we had to cancel it because there was a little snafu on getting the publication out in time that the state requires. I think they require fifteen-day notice in the paper, and I think we were like twelve days, and so, um, we're gonna, we're gonna reschedule it to a window that we can have the publication out in time. So I'll entertain a motion to cancel.
Make a motion to cancel the Drinking Water Project Plan Public Hearing.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion needed? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a public, uh, hearing, soil removal permit. I will entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for soil removal permits for Silent Acres Farm, O S H O L L C.
Support.
Okay, motion and support to open up public hearing at six oh three.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The motion carries, I will open up public hearing for Silent acre farms, um, soil removal permit. Does anyone wanna speak on our soil erosion permit for Silent Acres Farm located on Harson's Island?
It's also for the O S H O, but which otherwise known as Elginak Sand and Supply.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, it is, for the Elginak Sand Supply, too. Anybody, uh, wanna get up and, uh?
I guess I have a procedural question here again or another. So, is this public hearing just with reference to a Harson's Island operation, or property located at a different location?
It's for both of them, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, for, uh, two.
The other one being on Fruit Road?
Yes.
Then I represent Brian and Karen Klingenberg, they own property adjacent to the one on Fruit Road, and they're opposed to any permit being issued, because part of your ordinance requires that the property be at least forty acres in size, and from the tax records, it appears it's just under thirty-two acres, and they've called the township on many occasions as to violation of the operating permit, so they put together, they're on a town in a family gathering, so I have some documentation that I'd like to submit on their behalf. Is it okay to?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if the property on Fruit isn't large enough to meet the ordinance requirements, it seems to me that you can't grant them a permit unless they have some variance from either the ZBA or some other entity that has control over that. And if they're not in compliance with their previous permit, it seems to me that you shouldn't renew it, and it's my understanding that procedurally, part of this property issue is gonna be on the agenda, the Planning Commission on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven o'clock, so until the Planning Commission takes some action, the, it seems that it's premature for the Township Board to take some action. And I visited the site from my client's property and from the street, and it appears that there's no warning signs out there that are supposed to be there pursuant to your ordinance. It's not fenced. Shortly after, my clients complained on one occasion, someone operated a bulldozer in close proximity to the common property line. It seems to me that that's an excavation, and that wasn't part of their previous permit. On a practical level, it seems to me that it was like a retaliation for them complaining, that's in the pictures on page five. The, uh, part of their permit also says you can only have semi-trucks with one trailer going in and out of the facility, and there's a designated haul route. Some of the pictures shows that there was a gravel train, and by that, there's the one trailer that took to the tractor, and then a second trailer, so if they're doing that, it seems to me that you shouldn't renew their permit until they're in compliance. In some of the pictures, there's a haul route, when they get up to Fruit Road, they're supposed to go left in an easterly direction towards Nook, and then out to M twenty-nine, and on occasions, they don't do that. So, attached to the public notice that we got offline, it seems to me that that references activities out on Harson's Island, because it says two zero forty Golf Course Road, Harson's Island, and it doesn't make reference to the Fruit Road property. So if you don't have proper public notice, or the documents that someone can obtain offline showing the twenty forty Golf Course Road, Harson's Island parcel in three different places on the application signed by Donna Horvath, that it's premature to take any action on this matter for either one of the parcels. My clients don't have an impact, or the one on Harson's Island doesn't impact them, but if it's a joint thing, and you haven't given proper notice, it seems to me that other than tabling it, any other action is premature and probably violates the provisions of your ordinance. So if you had any questions, I'd try to answer them.
I think so at this time.
Thank you. And before you make a decision, I know it's a volume of documents, but I just got it on Friday, so the easiest way to get it to you was delivering it tonight, and so I'd like you to review that before you make a decision.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the public hearing for soil removal permits? Once, twice, three times? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing for soil removal permits.
Make a motion to close the hearing, for the public hearing for Silent acre farms and always, O S H O L L C.
At six ten. Have a motion? Support. And support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, for the reason I'm sure all of you guys are here, is the supervisor's report. So brace yourselves. I've been doing a lot of work on budgets. We have tentative agreements with three of our bargaining units, which we'll be talking about later. Uh, working on onboarding the Spark Grant, um, for the playscape that we got and other park enhancements, and actually meeting with quite a few equipment suppliers, I'm on their please call list all of a sudden. Um, we applied for a SEMCOG, a joint with Elginak and IRA, a joint, uh, grant that SEMCOG came out for planning assistance that would cover fifty thousand dollars of engineering, and, uh, we're, uh, it was for facility engineering, for wastewater treatment plants and/or stormwater. So we, we applied for, for the grant, um, to take a look at the wastewater treatment plan as far as if and when we needed to expand it, and what would be the best way to do that. Because, you know, if, if we have to do, do an expansion five, ten years from now, and, and that would mean replacing this doohickey, I don't wanna put money in fixing the doohickey if, if it's gonna be gone, you know, down the road, so I guess if that makes sense. We all know what a doohickey is, right? Anyhow, we, um, we filled out that grant, and I think there's a quick turnaround, they're, they're gonna let us know in about two months, so. Um, we do have a charter bus scheduled to take interested parties to La Pointe, Indiana, La Porte, Indiana, to tour an algae wheel treatment plant similar to the one we're considering to put on Harson's Island. It's gonna leave the ferry dock on the mainland side at seven AM, and then we're picking up some people from the mainland here at the park, they're gonna be parking next door, um, and make the trip. And, um, we're gonna go out there, it's about a four-hour drive, and then, um, lunch is gonna be provided. I, I have engineers and the designer of the plant, and the plant operators are gonna be there to answer any and all questions, and, and take everybody around, and then we'll be returning hopefully between five and six o'clock that night. I, I think I'm, got a little over twenty people, uh, signed up for it right now, so.
What's the date on that?
Wednesday, the, um, seventeenth.
Are we stopping in Lansing, did you say, to pick up some people?
No, no, that's out of our way. Um, we might have a couple staff people meet us there, I'm still waiting to see if there's, what their schedule's like. They said they're gonna give me an answer tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Okay, charter bus. And then also that same thing, we are looking for sites on the island to place the treatment plant. I had our engineers over there, uh, I don't know, a couple days ago, they all blend together now, Thursday, and, uh, we probably looked at four or five sites that would be suitable, and, uh, so we're in the process of, uh, of getting a site secured, uh, for that. Still working on blight issues, that's an ongoing thing, and, uh, actually making some pretty good, uh, strides in that area, and I, I, I tell you what, I gotta hand it off to our code enforcer, Roman. He's actually working Saturday on cleanup day, he asked my permission, I said, well, yeah, he's not overtime, and, uh, he's actually assisting some elderly people to clean up their yard for our cleanup day Saturday. So, that, that, you know, that, that shows a lot, and I, and the people that we're helping are very appreciative, and, and, um, kudos to him, and kudos to Clay Township. Let's see, is he close, sir? And we are, we did receive quotes for insurance on the wastewater treatment plant, and I, truthfully, I thought we would have agreements in hand a few weeks ago, but I, I don't have them yet. Clay DDA Downtown Development awarded bids to, uh, build three pickleball courts where the volleyball is, uh, they're gonna be starting this week, I see there's material already dropped off there, and, um, they're planning on having it done in about two and a half, three weeks. And also, they, um, bids were awarded to build a bathroom to support the Pearl Beach fishing pier, and then to build a parking lot with, um, also for the pier, and, uh, I think we're putting in eleven parking spaces, curbs, and, um, it's gonna, it's gonna be nice. We're doing that, the parking lot part of it under a permit of the St. Clair County Road Commission, they still own the road, it's a road, but they're allowing us to put it in the, the parking for it, so, um, it's all starting this week. Okay, and I wanted to mention, too, the, all the bids did come in below the engineer's estimate. Uh, we've been doing a lot of work on the Clear Water State Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, um, for both our water, for both water projects and the sewer project. We are shopping for, uh, insurance for the, the township, and actually, they'll be here next, uh, for our next meeting, but initially, I think we're, we're gonna be paying a little less than we're paying this year, so, um, that's what initial quotes are, so that's a good thing. And we're starting the design process for new public safety building next to the Bowlin Alley. Working on getting the state maps corrected, uh, for the broadband, uh, expansion, and we're working with the state's chief connectivity officer, that's his title, and hopefully we'll get those maps corrected anyhow. Working on round two of the Spark Grants for the exercise equipment. Do you recall, we wrote a grant for a trust fund grant to get that equipment, and that grant pays for seventy-five percent, but the Spark Grant is more, it, it pays for a hundred percent, there's no match, so I'm gonna reapply for that, and those are due sometime in the beginning of June. Oh, we've received some free trees to give away from Cargo Salt Company. We had two hundred red oak, two hundred white oak, two hundred bir oak, and two hundred shag bark hickory trees, and we gave them away at the powwow, I think I gave about five hundred away, still got some, and the rest of them we're gonna give away at our cleanup events here on the mainland in both islands. And we should probably look at planting a few in the park, because we took down some trees there, so, they're nice trees.
Just don't plant them under power lines.
Yes, don't plant them under power lines, I should make someone sign a, a thing. Met with the lower, a bunch of lower St. Clair County communities talking about the bridge to bay path routes, and, uh, setting up priorities and applying for grants to make that a done deal. Uh, we're first gonna start connecting Marine City to our trail system, which basically goes to Roberts, starts at Roberts Road, um, just past the state park, and, um, and we, we looked at a couple different path options, um, so we won't have to utilize the Dyke Road for bikes, because that just, that scares me and everybody else. We're either gonna use the old Detroit-Ervin Railroad, which is a walking path now with a series of bridges. We have to wait for DNR, it's gonna take a year or two to see if they allow bikes on there, right now, they don't, but we're appealing to them to do that, and if not, we have alternate route that will take Phelps Road back in the road, we'll go to Clay State, Clay Road, which not too many people know where that is, but it's next to the, well near where the access site is. Now we'll get you to the DNR property, then we can go up to Perch, Perch Road, and, uh, over to IRA, and, uh, so that's what they're working on with that, and it, it all, you know, looks actually pretty good. Found out, had a couple phone conversations today. I don't know if you recall, eight, nine years ago, under the radar, went to Harson's Island and did a show, and they are coming back. Their show is one of the highest rated shows they've ever done, and, uh, I'm not sure when yet, they communicated with me, and, uh, wanna set something up, and also, the Awesome Mitten is called, awesomemitten.com, they do, uh, um, travel series in the state of Michigan, they are also coming to Harson's Island, and trying to get under the radar to do a, a show about Chris Crafts, and do a, get them here for the, um, Antique Boat Show with all the Chris Crafts there, and, you know, that's where the, the plant was, where they are made. It'll be a good show, I think, we could take them to one of the guys that, uh, several people that do refinishing the Chris Crafts, I'd probably get them to Alan Mackey's or something, where they can interview them and show them, get them to the Maritime Museum, and then catch, they always like to do a restaurant, Catch Twenty-Two, because it's full of Chris Craft stuff. I think that would be a good show, too. They normally don't do shows for like, like Model Ts or boats or anything, but I'm, I'm trying to, to get that one going, because I, there's, there's Chris Craft people, antique boat people all over the country, so. Spring cleanup is this weekend, May twentieth, behind the water department, and May twentieth and twenty-first on Harson's Island at Brown's Field, and there's not too much we don't take, if you bring a tire, it's gotta be off the rim. Please check with, I mean, we'll, we'll take small boats, if there's no gas tanks and engines, we can't have oil or anything in there, and, uh, we'll have a drop-off spot for hazardous materials. If you have latex paint, please, if you have latex paint, you don't have to bring it to us, pop the can, let it dry out, or if you want, pour cat litter or sand in it, let it dry out, it just has to be dry, then it can go in to the regular garbage. Why you ask it has to be dry, because when it crushes, uh, it filters down and it runs out, and when we have paint, you color your bedroom going down the road in the stripe. So we don't need to know what color bedrooms you have on our road, so please, just let it dry and go in the regular, um, garbage. Okay, we're planning, also along with the cleanup days, our San Souci Block Party, May twentieth, Saturday, dancing in the streets. It starts at five PM, it'll go till about eleven, eleven-thirty, we have three bands with two stages. Uh, we have Ten Beach Drive, Dogfish, and the Meljum Brothers, all three very good va- bands, and, uh, it looks like preliminary already, they're saying it's gonna be a nice weekend, and, uh, let's see, we were, uh, oh, yeah, the, um, Clay Days was last weekend, I think that was a, a pretty good success, at least everyone told me they enjoyed themselves, there was a couple things, you know, we're trying to get Miss America Ten there, uh, they canceled, so we had Sensation Boats, which also originated from here, right over there, um, there, it would have been cool if we had the Miss America Ten next, you know, to Sensation, the new and the old, but we'll try that again, and, uh, the powwow went well, I was hoping for a few more vendors, but, uh, the ones that were there had some really nice stuff, and, uh, the quilters did, they had the quilt show, that was very good, and they had the Underground Railroad Trail with quilt blocks, how it, uh, how that, the plate, the, how that role played during the Underground Railroad, and there was secret messages telling people which way to go and not to go, and stuff in the quilts, and they put them outside, that's how it worked, actually, it was kinda interesting. But, yeah, I think they were happy, the log cabin, uh, and the Historical Society was happy, everyone came, came away okay, it was a good event again, so, and we're still putting together other fun stuff to do this summer, so that's the fun part of this job. Any questions? Great. All right, next is public comments, do we have any public comments? No public comments. We will keep on going. Consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the reports from board approved, checks five-one of twenty-twenty-three, E F T transfers, and the checks cut in between meetings, as well as the minutes from May first, twenty-twenty-three.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have our fire chief's report. George Rose, how you doing, George?
Good evening. Fire Chief's Report for April twenty-twenty-three. During the month of April, I attended one meeting, and that was over at the St. Clair Flats Association on Harson's Island. Uh, we picked up both our new pickup trucks, a new Chevy thirty-five-hundred HD dual wheel that'll be at the main station here on the mainland, and a twenty-five-hundred HD, and that will be placed on the island. Uh, they've been taken down to Magic Graphics, they have the lettering and striping all is done on it. One truck's got the lights on it, the other one has a light bar and some, uh, lights to be put in the grill, they should be in service at the end of the month, this month, so. Early warning ser- system, uh, we finally got that all completed. The last siren that was on Volk's Road, we moved it from there because it's on state land, and the state land was bought with federal funding, so there would have been another hurdle that we would have to jump through, so we moved it to four thousand one, Saint, uh, four thousand one South Channel Drive, and it's been installed in the ground, power will be tied into it the twenty-third, so all of them will be up and running in June. Fireboat one, I sent out the fuel injectors and the, um, air injectors to a company out in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, we got those back today, uh, it's, got an appointment to be taken down to the marina and have those installed, and hopefully we'll have the boat in the water by the end of the month, or end of the week, first part of next week, so that'll be done. Clay Township Fire Department, along with IRA Township, Elginak, and Marine City, was involved in a joint diving exercise with the St. Clair diving, uh, team, along with the St. Clair County Sheriff Department, and eleven, eleven other St. Clair Sheriff Department dive teams. The scenario was a parachute plane went in the North Channel over by the, uh, DNR site, and they wanted to see how we would respond and also use our resources within the county.
Everything go good with it?
Yep, everything went real well. Again, no latex paint.
Yes, thank you. Any questions for Chief?
Chief, the early warning systems, they're up and running, so that brings us to total to how many sirens?
We at, uh, well, we got four on the, on the island, and then we'll have six on the mainland.
So ten total?
Well, no.
Nine.
Nine.
Nine?
Yep.
And those get tested monthly?
First month.
First Monday.
First Monday.
First Monday of the month at nine AM?
One o'clock.
Oh, one o'clock, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Chief. Oh, one other thing that, no, not you, Chief, for my supervisor's report, I forgot to mention our.
No, we're not on that.
Oh, no, no, sorry, no, no. St. John's March Cleanup went well, um, we have sixty, sixty-five people there. We have 60, 65 people there that cleaned up, and they all got free T-shirts. And I saw a lot of T-shirts walk around Clay Days after the, after that was done, and they cleaned up a bunch of garbage, so good kudos to everybody involved with that. All right, new business, soil removal permit, Silent Acre Farms.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for Silent Acres over on Harson's Island.
Support. Yeah, motion and support, any discussion? You see the paperwork, they are billing, inspector signed off on it, and they have their proper insurance and, and things. I would like to mention that Gary asked earlier, we were not addressing the Algonquin Amptit OS HO until after the public hearing, which is scheduled in a week and a half from the planning commission, but we are addressing Silent Acre Farms tonight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to reschedule our public hearing for the drinking water state revolving fund project plan.
I'll make a motion to reschedule a public hearing for DWSRF project plan for May 24th, 2023, at 5:00 PM.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Reason we have it at 5:00 is because there's a planning commission to deal with the Algonquin Amptit at 7:00, so. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have the, um, the administration, the professional office staff collective bargaining And, okay, to entertain. Actually, Anita, you want to come up and say a few things? Come on up. Anita's the steward for this collective bargaining agreement.
Hello. So I was gonna introduce myself, so anybody that doesn't know me, I'm Anita Rezepa, and I've been at the township going on nine years, and I'm the union steward, as I already said. And I'm also working in the treasury department, I'm the deputy treasurer for Christie. And also here, real quick, I have Janet Garaga. She's been with the township going on seven years, and she works in the clerk's department. She's a deputy clerk for Chris, Cindy, sorry. And also Diane Baranowski, she's also been at the township for six and a half years, and she works in the treasury department and office administration. And not with us tonight is Amber Nelson, and she's been here only six months, and she started full time last month. And she's not here, but she's a building assistant, and she works in the building department with Cindy Babish. I just kind of want to put in some faces and the names to the people that are in this contract, so we're just not, you know, absent faces to everybody. So just what I wanted to say is that, you know, we are very dedicated employees, and we come to work every day, and we're hardworking, and very dedicated and trustworthy. And in this world that we live in today, that's sometimes hard to find. So we are a very well-oiled machine at the office. All of our departments support each other. And just to be clear, I'm not just talking about just the four of us that's in this, that's in this contract, I mean, everybody in the office, the building department, the assessing department, the clerk's department, and quite honestly, Artie, Christie, and Cindy, because the three of you are there as well. And we support each other. Treasury supports assessing, assessing supports building, clerk's department supports us, we all support each other. And we're there every day, and we're not just taking phone calls and taking customers, you know, at the counter. We, it's brutal sometimes, it's, I got hung up on today, just for the simple fact that that person probably already had a bad day, and for no reason. And then what we do is we just turn around and we put a smile on our face, and we take care of the next customer, either it's on the phone or if it's at the counter. And I'm sure Janet's got some horror stories about the election, and it happens in every, every department, but we always have each other's backs. And another thing, quickly, I've been to meetings and seminars with Christie, without Christie, and I've heard other comments made. You know, I've heard assessing say, our clerk and our treasurer, they don't even get along. Or the treasurer, you know, say, the assessing department, they don't even give me access, I can't get my tax roll out on time. Or we can't get our bills paid, we can't get the bank recs done. And I'd sit there and I think to myself, how can you function like that? I would never want to ever work in an environment like that. How can you do that? Thank God I don't work in a place like that. And if you come in our office, you'll see that. You might see a birthday cake in the kitchen, or there's a couple of boards in there, there's a just-for-fun board where Artie's got a snowball on his head in a picture, okay? Or we all have our birthday cakes, or you might come in and see us laughing, and that's because we're friends. You know, we're not just coworkers, we're family. And so, you know, we just feel that this is a very fair contract, we don't ask for much. I, I have notes here, I haven't even looked at them, to be honest with you. So it's, it's, it's a fair contract. We don't ask for much daily, we're not asking for much in our contract. And I just kind of wanted to put our faces and our names, so you know that we're people, you know, and we're hardworking, and we care about our jobs, and we care about our community. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for four people?
Yeah, the, yeah, there's four people in this bargaining unit.
I'll make a motion to approve the professional office staff collective bargaining tentative agreement for the years 2023 through 2027.
Support. Yeah, motion and support.
Mark, was that you that supported that?
Yes.
Mark did, yeah. Just so everybody knows, the year one, the pay's gonna go up 5%, year two, 4%. And I, we gave them a choice for year three, because nobody really knows what the economy's gonna be like three years from now. If someone does, please let me know. But we gave them an option of tying their wages to COLA, the cost of living allowance, or a 2.5% increase, and they, they, they went with the 2.5%. I think one of the bargaining group, units is gonna go with the COLA, so.
Is that for '26 as well, because this goes through '27?
No, we'll, we'll talk about, we'll just do, negotiate the wages on that, and no other option, no other things in the contract, just the wages.
So we don't know what would happen in '26, does the contract go through '27? I'm confused, I guess.
Yeah, year four, we don't. We're gonna, we'll, we'll sit down and talk about just wages only. In other words, they can't just say, hey, you know-
That's the wage reopener.
Right.
Okay. If 5% is the max, we can go.
Well, you can give them more if you want, but-
Oh, I thought, I saw a note somewhere, but maybe that was just for police, 5% is the max, you can go?
No, we can pay them anything. You know, when you, when we're bargaining, and, and I'll tell you what, I mean, Clay Township, at least this board, and all the union stewards, we have a very good relationship. And I think this is the first time Anita was involved with it, and I think she was a little nervous, and probably Dale, too, before, you know? And we just sit in a room back there, and, and we're, both sides are fair, we don't like, they go high, we go low, and, you know, we're, we don't play those games. And it goes very smooth, and realistically, we, we could have hammered it out in one meeting. But like I say, we, we give them a few options that they had, had to go talk about. And, um, you know, there, there's other communities that's gone up more than 5%, but under the Headley, you know, everyone's taxable, or values of their homes probably went up 8, 10%. But the Headley, we're capped at 5%. They can only go up 5%. So it's hard for us, and budgetary reasons, to go up more than 5% in a year when our revenue doesn't go up, you know, it's capped at 5. And they all respected that. And, you know, when, when you have inflation rate at 8.5%, it's hard to argue, so. But like I say, both sides were fair, I believe.
I know, you know, cost of living has really went up. I polled a bunch of union tradesmen, they're at 2% increase for the next couple of years, so, you know, being generous, so that's, you know, it's good. Continuing to research it.
I got the Bureau of Labor stats, and these came out end of March. Wage and salary increases, 5% for the last 12-month period, and 4.7% last year for the same period. We all went up 2% last year. So this is from the US government, and, you know, I have a whole list of, of examples I could go through, but I don't think it's necessary.
I've just been polling people that I know that work, so.
Well, this is polling everybody. I think it's a little bigger poll.
Right. I'd like to see it, we'll get it later.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any other discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Christie Hiltonan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bichard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next we have dispatch.
No, it's patrol.
Patrol.
No, I'm sorry, patrol. They're the ones that carry guns, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the patrol collective bargaining tentative agreement for years 2023 through 2026.
Support. Okay, motion and support, any discussion? And again, they are the, basically the same percentage as office. Hearing nothing, roll call, please.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Christie Hiltonan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bichard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion passes. Next we have dispatch. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the dispatch collective bargaining tentative agreement for years 2023 through 2026.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
How many people in, in dispatch now?
What, do you have four, five, six? I have six. No more discussion, roll call, please.
Christie Hiltonan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bichard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Right, motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for the job you guys do. And like Anita was saying, and every, I'm out in the public all the time, and I hear all the time, oh, so-and-so helped me with this, or so-and-so helped me with that. Believe me, you guys can make our job easy, or can make it really hard, and we appreciate the job you guys do. So I mean that from the bottom of my heart. All right, next, police vehicle leases. We have two of them.
Okay, as we talked before, as far as the leases go, we had two vehicles that were left still that were purchased vehicles that we purchased roughly two and a half years ago, and we're looking at putting everything into our lease program. With talking with enterprise, the advisors, probably about the best time to sell those vehicles for what we can get for them. And what we're looking right now is we think we will get just, we will get as much as what we paid for them, if not more, than what we paid for them two and a half years ago. Still gonna keep us eight vehicles being leased, and where we're looking right now is with those eight vehicles, the lease payments on those in a year will still be cheaper than buying two vehicles a year, which gives us eight vehicles instead of buying just two vehicles in a year. Helps us keep these miles down, helps us get, you know, better bang for our buck at the end of the leases as well, when we go to get rid of these. So, so far, this is really turning out very well for us.
But we realize the savings is on the back end of the lease when we turn back in and sell them, so.
What kind of mileage do you put on average, those vehicles?
Well, if, if we stayed, and that's the thing that's making a difference here, is if we stayed in these vehicles like we were, we're putting an average of 60,000 miles or better. And with us taking and alternating these vehicles now, it's allowing us to keep these vehicles longer, because basically, within two years, we're killing a vehicle. And what you gotta look at, too, is not just 60,000 miles, if you start looking, turning the hours into miles, that's gonna be more like almost 100,000 miles in a year, if you look at the idle hours and everything that's on it with that as well. So we put a lot of miles on them.
Are you restricted on miles with these lease vehicles?
No. No, but what we're trying to do right now is, we are trying to take these vehicles and rotate them as we start getting up some miles on them, like we hit about 40,000 miles, we rotated them into secondaries. And then you're, we're putting a lot less miles on those vehicles, bringing the other ones in, but it keeps us to where everything is fully staffed as far as vehicles. And then when we have events, all the different events that we have, we need all hands on deck, we've got enough vehicles to be able to put people into them. So it really, it's really working out well for us.
Mike, will these two vehicles, will this put all your vehicles into the lease program at this point?
All except for one. We have one left, which is, Bill Cope's got the last hoopy, which is, he uses all of his tech equipment and everything for doing all the crime scene investigations and that, keeps in that vehicle. We're, we're trying to limp that one through a little bit longer, see how much we can get out of it. Bill's been doing a pretty good job of duct tape and bubble gum keeping it together, so.
And this program does cut down on our repair costs significantly.
Enormous what we've seen this last year, cut it over in half, as far as our vehicle maintenance goes. I talked to other chiefs, and they, they cannot believe how low our vehicle maintenance bills actually are. I mean, our, really, our only expenses we've been seeing is tires, putting, and oil changes. They have really went down. One other thing, you know, which was kind of a surprise, you know, when I came to you, when they had actually dropped our, our cars from the line because of the shortages they had going on, we had to reorder again, well, then they found us those four vehicles, which were the hybrids. I was a little worried about getting those at first, skeptic on them, but turned out to be a blessing in disguise. And you asked Cindy, I think, it, it cut our fuel almost in half, what we were using with those cars, which absolutely shocked me.
And you liked them.
So I, I do believe the next vehicles that we order, we're gonna look at going with these hybrids. They, they cost us, they cost us a few thousand more, but at the end of the year, we're definitely saving that money threefold.
That was gonna be my next question, is that what we're getting?
Yeah, yeah, our next orders will definitely be going with the hybrids.
And they run in super stealth mode.
Yes, nice and quiet. When we take off, you're not hearing them. That takes a little bit of getting used to.
You still have full warranty even with the mileage you put on them?
Yes. We've got 100,000 powertrain warranty on that on these, so covers everything bumper, bumper, as far as any major repairs, brakes, things like that, the normal stuff, I mean, we, we gotta take care of normal maintenance, but.
Did you see the Traverse, they just issued a manufacturer's warranty thing on the airbags? We're gonna have to take them in and-
Now Steve would be driving that, we'd be okay.
Yeah, give that one to Steve. Yeah, problem with the airbag. I just saw it-
You're seeing a lot of them, yeah. I've been, I've been watching that, there's-
Yesterday morning.
All the manufacturers, because these Takata airbags, which are used throughout the manufacturer, so.
I'm surprised they're still out there.
That one's a little scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a line item on that?
Yeah, yeah, but is that 970?
Yes, 970.
207, 970?
207.
Which would be our capital outlay.
It's capital outlay.
Over 5,000.
Actually, it'll end up getting moved to a lease line.
Yeah, that's, we did do that this last time, brought to its own, its own line item.
Yeah, it's not on the letter, but it's that, yeah.
So someone canceled these shows, right?
Yes, and that's what, with these vehicles, is one thing that we were looking at is, you know, when we sold our pickup truck, because they told us, listen, we can get the money out of that, and that's why we got rid of it. It was five years old, and we got really good money out of that thing. So we said, well, when we go and we get rid of the next ones, that's what we look at, because we use that for pulling our trailers, pulling our boat, for any kind of large items we have to pick up and that. We use it for that. So, I'll be driving that vehicle, keep the miles down on it. I think, two and a half years, I put 11,000 miles on the one I've got right now, so. At the downturn with that, we'll definitely get our money back out of it. Same thing with the Chevy Traverse they found us. Got it under invoice pricing on these, and they were vehicles that somebody else had ordered, didn't take the orders. And I just asked them, I said, keep your eye, you know, out, if you do see anything. And they called me, said, hey, they're here, they're not going to stay long.
Got to let them know right away.
Yeah, they go that fast.
Are geared towards PD?
Yeah. Well, these, no. And the ones that we had before these are just a standard vehicle. They're an admin vehicle, how we use these, so at the end of the day.
These two particular ones.
They'll actually sell, actually better for us, because of that.
You won't be wrapping them and all that, right?
No, no. We still will have lighting, things like that, on them, just in case we do have to do emergency status, but, yeah, they won't be done the way you see the other ones. Lot less equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve the two police lease vehicles, adding the amount of $2,159.36 monthly to the lease line agreement.
Support. Motion and support. Any more discussion?
That's for both vehicles, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mark Bichard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have police vest replacement.
Nice try.
That's a quick, Mike.
Come on back.
I should have let him get all the way to this chair.
This is a contractual agreement, as far as it goes with our vests. We, per contract, we have to replace these every five years, and that is the manufacturer's suggestion as well, because of the breakdown between the wear of every day, as well as the sweat and getting wet and everything else. They say that they break down, so every five years, we have to replace these. The cost that you see on there includes trauma plates and that for the officers. This year, we went a little bit different. They offered a different trauma plate, which will actually stop rifle rounds, 556, 762, as well. We haven't had that before, and in today's day and times, I think we need it more than ever. So these were, a little bit adding expense into these. They are a more and more top-of-the-line vest, a lot more comfortable for these guys to wear. And we did get the Burns Justice Bulletproof Vest Grant awarded to us as well. So, that, all that paperwork's being forwarded over to them right now, and then they'll end up giving us back the $400 per vest.
Who do we test these vests on?
That one's usually, James is usually the test on me.
James usually, yeah.
Yeah, either Taser or anything, yeah, it'd be James. Yeah, actually Dale would be a good one, too.
Yeah.
He is newly graduated from Academy. Actually, Saturday was his first day in uniform. He was out there working the marsh cleanup and did a great job slowing people down.
So how many vests for the 21, 945? How many vests?
19.
And we're a little past, because you got them in August of 17, so we're six years.
Yes, everything was so far behind, including the, so the waiting period was a little bit longer.
We're getting 7,600, so it's only costing us 14, 345?
Yes.
Okay.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Clay Township PD request for the vest replacement at $21,945, deriving from line item 207-971.
Support.
Motion and support. Any more discussion?
Chief, I have one question. Will this stop all the solicitation that I have coming on the phone for vests for officers?
Uh, no. Hey, I can tell you, just hang up on those.
Okay.
So, wouldn't we deduct the grant money from it, and only?
We have to pay it, and then we get reimbursed.
Yeah, we get reimbursed.
So we have to approve the whole expense.
Got it, okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Mark Bichard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Next, I have the usual work orders for road commission. They are for pretty much maintenance of our roads. Stone haul, rubber sealing, shoulder repair, those type of things. The mowing, the ditches, and, yeah, rubber cracks, and seal patching. Entertain a motion.
This is the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the St. Clair County Road Commission road maintenance work order agreements in the amount of $81,477.79.
Support. Motion and support. Would you ask, John?
This is just the annual routine stuff that they always do.
Yeah, we get blanket work orders, so they can go out and keep our roads drivable.
So we didn't budget any projects? Did we still budget for maintenance?
Yes.
How much did we budget for that?
Uh, right in there, I think I had it, I'd have to, I think it was about 100 grand. So if there's some culverts and stuff, we still got money to fix culverts.
Additional little projects.
Yes.
Which, this sounds like a lot of money, but I mean, it's.
And some ditching.
Chloride, limestone, for the various roads.
And, mowing. I got all the budgets here, if you wanted to find the amount.
Well.
Which one it's in? It's in the general?
Yeah.
You probably can find it quicker than me. I had another question, too, when you're done with that.
What's that?
Well, I see that there's a 70-30 match with county for the limestone, but.
For the lime, for part of the limestone hall, that's a program that they have, yes.
But that's one of the, and we have two limestone projects, but they'll only help us with one?
No, they switch it. We have two limestone halls, because one's on Harson's Island, and that's actually a little cheaper, because we get the freight, the stone delivered by freighters.
Mm-hmm.
And then one on the mainland.
So one's on Crispin, yeah, that's the island. And then the other one is Columbine?
Yep.
And Volks, so that's the one they're not doing.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's the more expensive one.
Yeah, I got 125 in there right now.
Okay. That still leaves us with 44.
Okay, we have, any more discussion on these? And they're probably going to start the gravel halls here really quick, like in the next week or two, so. Hearing no more discussion. Roll call, please.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Bichard?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion passes. All right, next, we got board member comments. Cindy, you want to lead us off?
I just want to thank all of our employees for taking the time to sit down with us for your negotiations. It was not horrible at all. I appreciate everyone understanding the circumstances that we're in, and I appreciate you guys showing up to the meeting tonight, so thank you.
Yes. John?
Clay days was a good turnout, and I just wanted to say thanks to the DPW. Lance and his guys did a good job getting things set up and covering all the snafus.
Oh, yeah. And the cleanup.
And the cleanup, as always, yeah. I did want to address one statement that was made at the last meeting. There was a little bit of a conspiracy theory thrown out there in regards to my resume that came in for Township trustee. Maureen made the statement that it came in, I think, two days after Joanne's resignation.
I only knew it was in April, April 7th, I think it came in.
I just wanted to correct that, because I went back and looked at the record, and it actually came in on January 10th. So, I know there was a little bit of whatever going on there, but I wanted to make sure the facts got out there.
So Maureen, what you were looking at was the date that Ernie forwarded them to me to put them in the board packet. So he had them in his email from January. He forwarded them to me on April 4th to put in the board packet. And almost all of them were forwarded on April 4th, so it wasn't just trustee DeBoyers, it was all of the emails.
Well, when we looked at them all, his said April 4th, and everyone else had their dates on it.
Well, if you look, if you look back on the meeting, which is still posted online, if you look further down.
That's just a little fake news.
You'll see that that April date was when the supervisor forwarded it to me.
So I just wanted to clarify that for the general public.
Thank you, because I looked for it online after the meeting, and I couldn't find it.
The whole meeting's still posted there.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't find all the resumes, because they were there before, and I'm like, where are they? I couldn't find them.
Should all still be there.
Okay.
Just have to click on the link.
Thank you, John.
Maureen?
Thank you. Oh, just wanted to say, hope everyone had a happy Monday's day, and looking forward to seeing you at this weekend. The cleanup and the dancing with the streets, in the streets. Now, May 24th, we'll be here again, so for the public hearing.
Yep.
Yep, that's the planning commission.
Yeah.
No, that's 7 o'clock for you, 5 o'clock.
We'll be here. Well, congratulations to all involved with the bargaining agreement contracts. Seems like it went off pretty well. I'm used to negotiating with UAW and some other entities out there, and so this seems to be a lot, a lot less heated than what I had to deal with. But anyway, congratulations again to everybody. The planning commission is on the 24th. We don't have, you know, we do not have an agenda yet, so. Stay tuned.
Chris?
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, our professional office staff, the admin, patrol, dispatch, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for what you do for this township each and every day. I appreciate you. With respect to the township cleanup, I'm going to take a cue from Roman, and I'm going to contact a couple of my elderly neighbors. People that I know cannot assist themselves in cleaning up our township. So, I think that's a, that's a great plan. It's a good thing to do. I don't, I don't have anything to clean up around my yard, so I can assist somebody else. So, thanks for the great idea, Roman.
You know my act, right?
Yes, I do.
The phone lines are lighting up.
Yes, I do. Trustee Bichard, thank you.
I kind of want to do a public service announcement. When we did the marsh cleanup, we noticed a lot of what we're pulling out of the marsh seems to be what people put in their recycle bins. So, plastic bags, like Kroger, yeah, yeah. Kroger bags don't go in recycle bins. We just saw a lot of like Amazon boxes and plastic Amazon bags. So I think people are putting their recycling out when it's windy, and they don't have lids, so recycling is blowing all over, and there's a ton of it. It's hard to, I never noticed what was down the embankment. It's about fist-sized chunks of rock with mesh wire underneath. So when those things blow down, they get caught and wrapped up in that wire. And who knows what can get caught inside those bags? So, please don't put plastic bags in your recycle bin. You can recycle them at Kroger, or wherever you're out and about, stores that will take them back.
Most recycle centers don't accept bags.
And I know ours don't.
No.
So, yeah, just be wary of when you're putting your recycling out, because when it's windy and you're at the end of the street, it's all blowing right into the marsh.
Weight it down.
And the reason they don't take the bags is because I've seen these plants where they separate the recycling, and those bags get caught in the machinery and shut the lines down. They play havoc on it, so that's, that's the reason. Thank you. Thanks to everyone that came tonight, and, you know, I'll, I'll say it again, we're lucky to have all you guys working for us.[1706.04]